A lot of suggestions were thrown out. Nothing was etched in stone. I just want to be perfectly clear. We're kind of playing with it. Some of that discussion that we had was about using, keeping one way open. Using parking and having people walk on the sidewalk. I mean, these are things that are not finalized. We're just kind of playing with that idea. So, I've had some feedback from people who have told me they thought that this looks like a done deal and we're closing the whole street. And I think all we're doing is exploring the concept. I just want to point that out.
I got a question.
Yep.
You know, as far as doing that, you say the month of June. I really don't think that's realistic.
Why?
I think if you're going to look at something, you need to look at June or July. You need to come up with a plan that's going to actually give it some time to work. And if that means renting, renting some gates like the Pumpkin Fest did so that you could have some area. Or maybe that some parking behind businesses in the parking lot gets eliminated. But I really think we need, we need to look at this a little bit longer term.
I don't disagree with you.
As far as what's going to be done. And it would be nice if the Chamber was still involved in this. And I do think that the town should step up to do some of these issues to take care of the downtown businesses. I honestly do. But I do think that looking at the short window of being June is not really realistic to give this a chance.
Well, I think, I think the issue, and I appreciate that, if I may step in, I don't, I don't mean to step on anyone's toes. I agree with you, but I think that we talked about June as kind of a pilot to see how do businesses feel? How do citizens feel? How is it working? And if it worked, then we could revisit it and say, what does this look like one day a week down the road? That's my understanding. So I totally agree with you, but I think that if we don't start someplace and get a sense of how it's going to work, you know, that's what June will be for.
You know, I look at this, I look at this from the point of view of, I remember Mr. Sidelinker coming saying, we have to rent these
gates and go ahead and put on the Pumpkin Fest. But maybe we should be looking at it at a town to say, okay, if we were to purchase some of these, we can go ahead and rent it to the Pumpkin Fest to get our money back. But in the long term, when we have situations like we need to use them, maybe that's what we should be looking at.
So because we don't really have a lot of traffic, so we're not dealing with the same amount of traffic that you would with Pumpkin Fest. In fact, we're dealing with no traffic. So maybe cones would work, since we don't have tourists coming into town. And I think we own the cones or have enough businesses that we could borrow them from where we could cone off the on-street parking.
I don't like the cone idea because of children.
Cones, I've seen people drive, people drive between cones.
Right.
And they just, they don't mean bad, but I've seen some situations that it just was like unbelievable.
When we had our discussion, Mark, one of the things that I asked the businesses be agreeable to buying the plastic kind of bollards and fence, uh, paint put out. It's a lot more visible than a cone and it, it is a, you know, semi-solid barrier that you can't go between. And they seem to be agreeable to that. I think, you know, our hardware store sells that stuff. The idea of, Mark, that you had of purchasing the gates and then renting them out to other people is kind of a neat idea, but I don't know if that can all be done and if we even have a budget to do any of that. So that would have to be thought of. And just so everybody is clear, I guess, is that the discussion is, what can the town do, if anything, to facilitate what the businesses in town would like to do? So, we talked about, do you need a liquor license if you're serving your dinner out on the sidewalk or whatever? And do you want to serve alcohol on the sidewalk? Do you need a liquor license? Do you need to have a vendor's license if you're setting up out on the sidewalk and so on and so forth? So that the interest of the town is in those things. The particulars of how this might work would be up to the businesses, the business community and what they decide on. And, you know, kind of the final presentation to the selectmen. Does that make sense?
It, you know, it does, but what I would like to add with this is, if you look at your downtown area, that's a hub that draws these people in.
Right.
We are the service center of the area. We need to go ahead and work with these businesses. And, and I'll go all the way back to getting rid of our trash was always an issue. We ended up putting the trash onto them, which they paid their way. We also count on their taxes that come in. But, but then again, we're going to be spending a bunch of money in the back parking lot to make their insurance premiums go down. And I'm not saying that we're, we're just tending to those businesses that are downtown. But I do feel that we need to step up in this situation and help keep those businesses downtown and do what we gotta do for them right now because of the situation.
Okay. And just so you know that, you know, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, Susan, or Lisa, the, they're also going to Newcastle, you know, to talk to them about some, you know, the same thing, to really extend it, kind of a twin village, village area. So, the other, the other reason for doing this in June or starting it out or pilot testing it, if you will, in June, is that the governor has extended the emergency until the middle of June. And if she decides not to extend it past the middle of the June, then do we need to do anything, you know, or will people be out and about? If the quarantine is over and businesses are open and so on and so forth, will there then be the same need as there is now when businesses are just starting to open and starting to invite customers back in?
And I would argue that we might because regardless of these rules, a couple of things that I have learned is that they are changeable on a daily basis.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
And there may be people that are interested in coming here to flee wherever they're coming from, but that is not going to be the same number of tourists that we have had in the past. And that means that our businesses are going to have to work that much harder and collaborate that much harder to stay at least relevant, let's say. I don't think we're going to have a bang-up tourism year, even if we have some rushes. And I think that thinking long-term, how do we stay in business? How do we stay relevant? How do we get to stay here? And that's sort of my thinking about it.
Are there any other questions from the selectmen? Or comments from the selectmen? Josh, then Daryl.
My concerns is safety. I always have concerns, even when we do Pumpkin Fest, they have metal barricades. I, I'm not really in favor of using Main Street while traffic with the cones. I would suggest possibly closing Elm Street, Theater Street. Use those areas as well as the areas behind on the back side in the back parking lot on, alongside the buildings out back. I'm not in favor of putting any public, public risk. I've seen many times people driving down there erratically, even in when we do have the metal barricades. I'm all supportive of all the businesses. And I would also like to know what collaborative efforts you've had for other retail businesses that aren't located downtown. How are you going to address that?
Um, I think that select person, Robin, I don't know what to say. Robin Mayer.
Robin, just call me Robin.
Um, Jesus. Um, is, what we're looking at is, let me just back up for a second. I got caught up on your name, but the issue is how many people are involved? And, and I've heard some concerns about, you know, Main Street inviting, you know, Upper Main Street. I don't know what you call it. District one? Is it District one or District two where you've got Rising Tide and you've got all those other businesses as well? And then we're talking about reaching out to Newcastle. I don't know exactly how that would work, other than advertising efforts that help people go up and down the strip, including that section of town. I am probably going to be the person that approaches Newcastle because Rosie's otherwise got a lot of other stuff going on. I don't know what that would look like for Newcastle because Newcastle and ask them how they want to participate. But I think a way to connect all of the businesses, even beyond Main Street, is to, I think we talked about utilizing a map that already exists, maybe publishing that and saying, by the way, on this day, you can go up this street and then up this street and other things are happening. There's a way to be inclusive, if that answers your question.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how you, you have some artists that have some shops on Bristol Road, going down Bristol Road. You have Upper Main Street, different organizations up that way, you know, and if they can't be on the Main Street part, they could be Theater Street or something like that if they wanted to bring some goods. I, I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm really concerned about the safety with just cones being there. I, I, I really don't like tying up the Main Street. It's just a safety concern. And I think the town, if we can do it smart and utilize other areas, we're going to accomplish things that we want to accomplish. It's going to be much safer.
Okay. I guess the one thing I would think of, Josh, as far as moving to closing up Elm Street Theater, so on and so forth, is if you have a business and you're the sole proprietor, you can't be on Theater Street with a table and be inside your business too. If you have a table sitting in front of your storefront, you can manage both. And if you have a restaurant, I don't think you're going to get, having service, you know, back over to Elm Street Plaza from the Dammer Scott River Grill, for example.
No, I'm talking, they have an entrance, exit, they have entrance, exit on the back parking lot for the River Grill. And I think capacity, you have an alleyway that goes down to your parking slots out back. If, you know, if we have to trap, people have to walk a little bit to be safer, I, I, we gotta do what we have to do. We need to protect everybody. Who's gonna, and who's gonna have the liability? Who's gonna bear the liability if something should occur? And I hate to be the, the negative Nellie here, but it's just that, this, that's the normal thing.
You know, I, I get a comment here. I'll, I'll jump onto what Josh is saying. Is, I would agree with what he's saying. If we could make Elm Street one-way and then go ahead and utilize that back parking lot, everything behind those buildings, cone off similar barricade and then leave, you know, the Main Street open. You know, I do think he's, he's got a point there, but I do think that making Elm Street one-way temporary for a period of time might help us a little bit.
I think we, you know, we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. Might be missing a little bit of the, of the point of this discussion is, is we also want to make, you know, the businesses downtown, Upper Main Street, they're their storefronts. And you also want to make people, instead of, you know, we're moving it to a different location, the logistics of that with single owners and operators and whatnot, you also have the fact that you're shifting things away from their locations, you know, their home base, so to speak. I think it's a great idea. I think one thing we have to remember that, yes, safety is really important, but the realities are, like Matt mentioned, we're not going to have a bang-up summer. I don't think we're going to see hundreds of people on the streets lined up like a Pumpkin Fest. It's, it's more of an opportunity for small amounts of people to be able, that aren't comfortable going into a building to get their wares on the sidewalk as opposed to, you know, large crowds of people. And of course, then we look, you know, we run the crowd control issues, but there has to be a modicum of safety, but we're not going to see this tremendous amount of folks lined up everywhere. That's going to be very, like a dangerous situation. But it's, it's got to be really important to, to keep people in their home base, including Upper Main Street. You know, you put the day out and say, we're going to do it on this day, that invites folks at Upper Main Street and down the Bristol Road, they can set up in front of their own buildings. And it's out there. They have the space to do that, which is great. We need to promote that. Downtown, the different storefronts are on Main Street, so it's a little bit of a different situation. But it's great seeing the stuff come from the ground up. We've had too much stuff from the top down lately. So, yeah.
Kind of agreed. Josh, I, I agree with your question about the liability, you know, in the end, who's like, who's going to be liable for anything that might happen? Which then would say the barriers, the, the big metal barriers would be better than cones or balloons or anything that you might put out. I did ask Matt to talk to the chief to see what he thought about closing the parking spaces off for a weekend. And he, the chief, and Matt, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, the chief said that it would not be a problem. It should not be a problem as far as public safety goes to close off those spaces.
That's correct.
And I, you know, I have to defer to the chief on that. I think in some cases, because the, the parking is not there and barriers are set up and the activity is different, it naturally gets people in their cars to slow down. You know, because the street's narrower. Right now, people can zoom through there because people are not, or at least they could last week. Now people are starting to park there again. But because there's no cars parked there, there's no traffic, people go faster. But once everything, it starts to close in, when you start to, you know, you close in the street, literally. And so automatically it slows traffic somewhat. But you have a good point about the liability, and I guess Matt would have to look into that issue for us.
As business owners, we've started to talk about what liability looked like as well. And I have been trying to talk to my insurance company about it. Part of our liability is the concern that, in our restaurant, is that it's a very small state. And what happens if I get someone sick with COVID? And so there's a number of liabilities that I personally am trying to investigate, to be clear about, because unlike some other businesses, I'm not going to open up my doors yet. I'm going to work on curbside because I don't really feel confident that I know how to keep everybody safe yet. But liability is a very good question. And what's the business owner's liability and what's the town's liability? I mean, these are good questions, I think.
Okay. I, I don't know that we can decide anything here. That, I guess if anyone has questions, final questions for Lisa or Susan or anybody else, you know, look on your screen. You see some other business owners are here. Oh, Luke, go ahead.
I think that the business owners in the chambers have to come back to us with a little bit better thought of plan before we can do anything.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment. Our Board of Selectmen's next Board of Selectmen meeting is June 3rd. And I think that gives the business community, the Chamber, plenty of time to meet and discuss with all of the business owners.
Yep.
At least in the village and then further up the village and down Biskie Road, Bristol Road, to see how they can be involved. And to come back with a definitive plan or request of us in the interim. We can, you know, maybe looking at Mark's suggestion, look at how much some of those barriers would cost. It's kind of a neat idea that if we had them, we could rent them out. And that would recoup our costs over time. The one thing I will say though, Susan, is that the porta potties.
Yes.
I did not get in touch with Rockland or Portland yet to see what they were doing about porta potties. But I did talk to a restaurant owner who said that state law requires that if restaurants are open, they have, restaurants are open, they are required by state law to provide restaurant facilities.
Yes, but I would also argue with you, I mean, certainly for customers, but I would also argue that we're in a whole new set of circumstances now.
Yeah.
And we're all going blind here. So, if I'm supposed to keep my staff safe and keep people from being contaminated, it's a real challenge to keep people from trying to come in and use the bathroom. So there's got to be, there's got to be some give and take here between the town and the business owners on that regard. And also I think that we need some more guidance from the state because we're all trying to stay safe, right? And we, we have that common goal.
Yeah. I just, I don't, I cannot envision though, how we can keep, we, anybody, we, the town, we, the restaurant owners, we, the business owners can keep porta potties clean and sanitized. I just, that ain't going to happen. I know everybody's going to say, oh, it's great and we'll do it, we'll do it. But I think when it comes right down to it, if you're in your shop or
Right. It doesn't make sense. I thought that through. I thought, Jesus, why am I going to clean a bathroom and then come and, you know what I mean?
Come and make coffee. Yeah.
It doesn't make sense. I agree with you completely. But I, I guess my attitude is very can-do. It's like, well, if, if I can help in some way, but we're in a new world. And I think that we need some guidance. And I think we're probably going to have to look at like Pumpkin Fest, who cleans the bathrooms during Pumpkin Fest? Is that a service we pay for? And how do we do?
They come and they empty the porta potties and everything, but they aren't sanitizing them every hour.
That's some information. And so, you know, I'm willing to figure that out. I mean, if we, if we have to find a way to do that. And of course, by law, we have to let customers who are buying our goods use the bathroom, which involves a certain amount of sanitation. But when you have a bunch of people on the street just walking into your place and using the bathroom, now you're dealing with something completely different, you know? And I, I would, I would like to address the idea that I certainly am going to do my homework and do a more detailed job of doing a presentation. But I would like to have some help from the town because frankly, logistics is not something that I know how to do. So I would like some guidance before our next meeting on, you know, how to look at that. And I would also like the town's help perhaps in collectively going through the whole list of people, business owners in the town, retail and restaurant, and maybe having a unified letter to them, which asks for their input and interest. I think that if you have a number of different people approaching businesses, it's not really unified. And so I'm wondering if I can work with the town to, to kind of go through the town to elicit people's business owners' input. I mean, I've certainly done a lot of legwork myself, but I just feel that there's a uniformity here that would be better.
For me, and I'm not going to speak for the whole board. I'll just speak for me. But I think that, that since this is coming from the business community, that the business community needs to spearhead it. So the letter should come from the Chamber.
Okay. But the problem is that, you know, we don't have a, not every business is a member of the Chamber.
Right. The Chamber does not have every, the Chamber does not have everybody's information. They're not all invested in the Chamber. And the town ultimately, the select board has to make decisions about logistics. So what I'm saying is, you know, we've come to you, but if we're going to approach the town and we have to make decisions collectively, I honestly believe that the town has to help us reach out to everyone so everyone's heard and so that we've gone through this. So as far as spearheading is concerned, I'm happy to lick envelopes, but I need some help. That's what I'm saying.
As far as the porta potties are concerned.
Wait, wait, before we get to the porta potties, let's get back to the town's role in asking the businesses what they want to do. Mark said he was against the town writing the letter or doing whatever. Is that what I heard, Mark?
Yeah, you know, I think what it is, is what I was looking at is, what can we do as a service center? And I think by looking to, and I realize we'd have to spend some money to go ahead and do this gate idea, but I do think that long-term we could recoup our money to everybody because we can use it so many ways. But as far as porta potties and, you know, some other things, you know, that's, you know, we can't do everything as a town, but I do think that that would be a big step in showing that, well, look, we understand the situation. We are a service center. We do want to help you, but we're not going to do everything.
Right. And, and I'm not, I don't think any of us are asking the town to do everything. Let me be clear. I'm happy to do any of this legwork. But what I'm saying is that there are people who have approached me even today and said, well, why didn't the town tell us? Why didn't the town ask us? Right? Because who am I? So I'm not asking you to do work that you don't have time to do. What I'm saying is, I'm happy to spearhead. But, and I think that's what this effort is to begin with. But I also think if we're going to do a very thorough evaluation of how do we do this? How does it affect people? It has more meaning when it comes ultimately from the town because the town has to make these decisions. I can't make decisions about the road. I've got to go to you. That's what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
It does, in some respects. But if it's, it's a business community request. If the town, you know, if, if Dammer Scott a letterhead or email, whatever, goes into a business, it is a different weight. It carries a different weight than if it's a business community. You know, we, the town's role is to facilitate what you're doing.
I got you.
Not to, to direct or whatever. And they may, a business, any business, I don't know, may react to the town differently than it would to the Chamber of Commerce or, or Twin Villages Association or whatever. Because, because we tax you, we're responsible for your liquor licenses and so on and so forth. So it has a different, you know, it's just different.
I guess my point is, if we as business owners, and we can put a group of people's name on it, and we come to you and we say, we're interested in this, we haven't talked to everybody. But, you know, ultimately, the town needs to have enough information to make informed decisions. And so, I don't feel, I feel like I'm a peon and that not everyone is going to write me back or call me back. I also know that the Chamber has, there's some conflicts there because not everybody is a member of the Chamber. So people get emails from the Chamber and they don't necessarily respond. And so what, I guess what I'm trying to say, and I, I think your point is very valid, is how do we overcome that and make sure that everybody has the same information? And that's my concern. So I guess that's why I approached the town to say, if you're seriously considering this, what are the things that are important to you that we have to consider and, and get consensus on and all that stuff? I don't know if I'm making any sense. All I'm saying is, I think, you know, I've done a lot of knocking on doors and making phone calls. But I'm one person and Lisa's one person from the Chamber, and it's kind of mixed match. And what I'm concerned about is missing somebody, having people feel that they've not been heard or addressed. I guess that's my concern.
Okay. Matt, do you want to jump in? Do you have any comments on the town's role?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'd be happy to. Sorry, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I'd be hap, I'd be happy to work with the businesses and as far as sharing our, our mailing list. Well, what I could do is forward any letters that Susan or anyone else has about trying to get all the businesses involved and get their feedback. Of course, you know, we talk about town staff. That's essentially me when it comes to a project like this.
Right.
And we know I have a few other things on my plate right now. So, but I would be happy to work with getting, you know, with Susan or anyone else on getting the word out on, on a, you know, event or, you know, any, any type of reopening strategy.
I'm happy to do any legwork. I just feel that I need a way to do that in a, in a uniformed way that doesn't exclude anybody. And I'm not sure I have the capacity to figure that out by myself. And I'm not sure I have the capacity to figure that out by myself.
Well, let me ask you, Matt, what if you were to send an email to the businesses in town? You have a business email address.
Yes.
And say, you will be hearing from Susan or Lisa or somebody about this issue. These are the things that are going on. And then that way, then the business community could fill in the blanks and talk about it and discuss possibilities. My fear is if you do it and you're started to talk, then to each of the businesses, then they're gonna start asking you questions. And I think those questions need to come from the business, you know, back and forth between business to business, not between the town and business. So if you were to write an introductory email to say that, you know, that the business community, your representatives from, came to the selectman's meeting, this is what we talked about. You will be hearing from this person, who, you know, yet to be decided, who will give you more details and be asking specific questions about whatever you're gonna ask specific questions. You know, please be responsive, because we're gonna decide on June 3rd what's gonna happen. So that way, you're just doing the introduction and then backing out of it.
Robin, can I add?
Absolutely, who's that, Daryl?
Daryl, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think, overall, but in this case, in particular time right now, extremely important for the local government to support the citizens and the law. If there was a time to step up. It's now. You know, and, and I, I think what they're asking is not that we're making everything happen, but to, to, it's, you know, at the local government level and select board in particular, say, hey, you know, something's going on, you know, we're trying to do something and pick up what scraps are out there. And, and, and we are, you know, we're trying to make it happen and, and we, we promote that. Extremely important. So if something can come from, you just suggested, something from, from Matt's office, you know, we'll give Matt more work. But something, an introduction's perfect. Say, hey, this is what's happened, the conversation. And yes, the town will support these ideas, you know, it's extremely important.
Yeah. And, you know, and Susan, you and Lisa and whomever can decide who Matt will hand that, you know, the email, who it'll be handed off to, whether it'll be the chamber, even though there are non-chamber members involved, if it'll be to you or some other person. You know, y'all will decide and just tell Matt, and then he'll make the introduction and hand it over.
And I'm, I'm happy to help anyway. I really don't wish to give people unnecessary work. I just feel that the town also has a very significant part in collecting this information and then ultimately deciding on what's the best way to do it. So it is a bit of a collaboration, although it is spearheaded by the business community.
Yeah, once you have the information, that'll be the June 3rd meeting. Once all the data's collected.
You know, and the way I kinda look at this too is, I understand where the chamber's coming from because they cover all the commercial district. And you're having some people in the C2 district that says, look, why do they go ahead and they get the benefits of cleaning the snow downtown? They clearing the sidewalks downtown. So there's some of that, that the C1 district actually has to step up and say, look, C1 district needs to actually get together amongst themselves to figure out how we can go ahead and make this work without putting, you know, as us as a taxpayer, being a service center, we've already said, let's, let's figure out how we can make this work to benefit the C1 district. But to go to the C2 district and ask them to come involved with this, I, I, I just see this to be, we're gonna drag this out and talk about it in August.
So you're saying limit it to the village?
Well, I think that's where the issue is.
Okay.
We just don't wanna, we don't wanna exclude anybody.
Absolutely. But I think the C2 district, the C2 district is pretty much, they can take care of their own thing.
Okay. I don't know what I don't know.
I think a way to include that district is to put that, have those dates on a map and say, we're doing this on Main Street, but you can also go to the other district and people start to get used to when we're doing it. So they are kind of like trained, like, okay, this is the event that happens on this day in this town.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, yeah.
It's a good idea.
I'm checking my watch every night. So let me ask the selectmen, I wanna ask the selectmen if they have any other questions or comments for Lisa, Susan, or any other, I see some other businesses here online, if they have any specific questions about this program. And then we have to move on because we do have a lot to cover this evening too.
Thanks for the time. Yeah, thank you for the time.
No, I appreciate it.
I had a question, a couple of questions and a comment. This is Adam Rennie.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
And this is just something to think about. I don't expect anyone to have any answers, obviously, because we're just beginning to talk about this. But one thing to think about is, is when, like, if you're gonna do it all day from 8:00 to 8:00 at night? Or are you gonna have a specific set of hours or, or whatnot? Because I think if you have a free-for-all all day,
No.
You're gonna have some businesses open in the morning, some in the afternoon, some in the evening. And the point is, is to get people to walk through all downtown is so that if they go to one place, they're gonna see another place and hopefully do business there. So I think that it'd be most effective if you, if you figure out and make sure that it's, it's, and it's not gonna work exactly right, but try to find more common hours that, that all businesses could be open to make it more effective. And that reduces the time that you may be using parking spots in the street. And maybe, then you don't have a safety issue all day long that you have to worry about and whatnot.
Makes sense.
So that's just something to think about. And it makes it more of an event that people might come to and create a sense of urgency that they might wanna, hey, I can go here, here, and here outside and be safe, but all these places are open. So I don't know if the evenings better or the lunch, lunchtime or what time of day would be better. But I think if you have it open all day, it's not gonna be as, as effective as, as it would be if it was more targeted.
Really good point.
The other thing is, if it is the parking spots, and I know we don't know that yet, I think we should think about certain businesses, are they gonna have control over the parking spots in front of their door, door front? Or are we thinking of getting rid of all the parking spots? And I don't wanna infringe on anyone else's ability to do that, but we may not have, as Rennies, may not have a reason to put anything out on the sidewalk. Would we be able to make that decision ourselves? And also, as far as the other districts, businesses, if, if the local businesses in control of that, then they can offer, hey, or say to someone further down, down the road to say, hey, you can use a spot in front of my place and I can use another spot. But I think there needs to be some discussion about who has control over the, the parking spots. Is it all, everything? Or is it only the businesses that wanna participate? And then the third thing I had, just to think about, I know we're not gonna have a great tourist season, but just an observation I had, I don't know if anyone else noticed. But if you drive by with Casket Ford and you look across the street at the church and the old East True Value, there are about 50 to 75 cars parked over there, all out of state plates. They're all renting local vehicles. I, I personally think, while we're not gonna have as much tourism as before, but if you think about being stuck in New York or being stuck in Boston and taking the risk to come to Maine and defy the 14-day quarantine, I, I would think there's gonna be a few of those people that are doing that. I think they already are. And I know there's no way to, to influence that or to regulate that. And I actually don't agree with that, that decision for them to come here and risk our health. But I do think, I think we'll see, still see, especially if what the governor's done and the CDC is doing makes things better as time goes on. That's just an observation, not, nothing to, you know, decide, that doesn't really weigh on what we decide to do. But I do think we're gonna have some summer traffic. And I don't think it's gonna be a dead, a dead town, just put it that way. And that's, that's it, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I hope it's not gonna be a dead town.
I hope not too.
Things are kinda picking up already, which is good. Okay, any other comments from the selectmen? Okay, if not, let's thank you Susan, Lisa for coming and the other owners that are here. I'm not gonna name you individually, you know who you are. Get in touch, I will suggest that you get in touch with either Lisa or Susan in the next day or two and maybe help them work out some sort of a survey or a plan of action. Adam, you talked about time of day, which is a good idea to, you know, something to think about for sure. And just really have a conversation with the business owners. So, and we will expect then on June 3rd kind of a final plan. And we will continue, I will talk to Rockland about porta potties. I just couldn't see, you know, myself using one now. Where I could, you know, during Pumpkin Fest or something. But with everything else going on, with hand sanitizing and masks and everything else, I'm not sure I would wanna go into a porta potty. But if you, you know, and we will just stay tuned. If you have questions in the interim, you know, send an email to Matt or me. Give him a call and we'll just work on this with you to the extent that we're able.
Thank you.
And we'll see what happens in June.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being there.
Thank you.
And be welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, we love-
What's the rest of the meeting?
All kinds of things.
Robin?
Yes, sir, Matt?
So, I didn't do a good job of estimating times here. We have a couple items. And just for the information for the folks who are coming on for the Board of Appeals, we're still in our Board of Selectmen meeting. So if you could, just be patient until we get through some of our items here or all of our items on the selectmen's agenda.
I have so many other places to go.
And then I have, I've asked some folks to be here from Vine Street and Church Street. And I think we've got several people on the call from there. And the board may have seen my recommendation that you move down to that item. It's 7-1, Roman numeral seven dash one on the agenda, has to do with bid administrative services and a construction management contract with Gartley and Dorsky. And I'm asking if you could move that up on the agenda, if you agree, just to go ahead and table that. And there was some folks who were not aware that, that that drainage project was being considered. And I have talked to the engineer, I've talked to the road commissioner. And what we'd like to do is have a public meeting. It wouldn't be a formal public hearing, but we would do that on June 17th. And then the board could take action, any action it pleased after that. So I'm asking the board to table item 7-1. And that, that might save some time. And I think it'd be good to wait to have a discussion on that until, like I say, the engineer has made a presentation and we have the benefit of hearing from the different citizens in the neighborhood.
I make a motion, we table item 7-1.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And thank you to the folks that I see and recognize who do live on Church Street, Vine Street for sitting with us this long. And we'll table it and we hope to see you on June 17th. On June 17th, I believe we will be back in our meeting space. The Zoom anymore.
We will be back in our meeting space. And I'll be recommending that that, that meeting be scheduled at 6:00 PM because we need to have the secondary schools town meeting at 5:30.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand so we can get a count. Thank you, motion carries, thank you very much. And again, thank you Church Street residents for hanging in there with us. And again, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting too. We love the company. Okay, Matt, town managers' items.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through these fairly quickly unless you have questions. Please interrupt me as we go. You would've seen the governor's order, and I'm referring to specifically the governor's order that allowed certain rural counties in Maine to relax their restrictions. And we've had a number of businesses take advantage of that, hopefully using the, the social distancing and other, other guidelines that the governor has provided. As far as the town offices are concerned, we've been open since Monday to, to the public. We're fully staffed here. And we are, again, taking the precautions. And, and, yeah, sorry if I get distracted, I'm trying to do, be the AV man at the same time.
Matt, can I, Matt, can I ask you a question? Do you have the reopening plan, is that's all updated and on the website? So people know the hours and the, the rules, how they come in and go and what have you? Okay.
Yeah. And so what we're doing is we're accepting visitors by appointment. And that's worked out so far very well. Our staff have been keeping very busy. They meet people at the door and let them in. And our folks will stay behind the, the Plexiglas when they, when they process the, the work that folks need to have done. So that seems to be working well. I think that's, that's it, unless there's any questions on that. So the waterfront improvement project update. I've been pressing to have the restroom and the, the sanitary sewer, RFP's done. I hope that we have something to provide to the economic development administration for their review here in the next couple of weeks. Our waterfront improvement project committee, of which Lou Abetoni is a member, has been meeting and will be meeting again tomorrow to make final changes to the parking lot reconstruction and storm drainage, RFP. That, of course, includes the flood resiliency measures as well. If there are any questions there, I'm gonna continue right along. And the Bristol Road sidewalk project, sorry for the misspelling on the agenda there, but that is moving, again, that's moving along as well. We had some issues regarding the testing of the gravel material. I hope those will be resolved very soon. And we'll be able to put the asphalt down and get that project completed and then just be working on some punchless items. The LED lighting, I've had a couple of meetings with our partners on this. The towns of Newcastle and, and Bristol. We will have a participation agreement with, with RealTerm Lighting for your next meeting. And I'll be asking you to approve, approve that. What I try to do is mute the folks who are, who are talking on other calls. Let me just do that. Here we go. Mute that.
Matt, you muted yourself. I see you on two different screens. I see your face on one and your hand on another, that's kinda weird.
Two things going, Josh, go get Lily.
Okay, you can hear me again. I'm not sure how that happened. That's because the audio on my iPad is not working, but, so I have my iPhone working at the same time. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So if someone is asking me to be part of the meeting, I'm not seeing them because I'm using my iPhone for this meeting. Okay, so LED lighting, the other part of that is, I think it's very important that citizens get involved or at least be knowledgeable of what's, what's happening with their lighting system. Again, as I mentioned before, LED lighting has become, has become much more warmer than it's been. Share all your, I'm gonna mute you.
Sorry. I had to unplug my charger.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it's important that people understand the, the transition to LED lighting in addition to having so many more advantages in, in terms of dark skies and being much more adjustable when it comes to the brightness of the lights. So in that regard, we were setting up a meeting with RealTerm to come out and describe the various options in terms of, in terms of fixtures. So that will happen sometime in- So that will happen sometime in, in June. And again, it's, it's great that the other two towns, Bristol and Newcastle, are also going to be contracting with Real Term. There's just a lot of synergy that can occur as a result of that. On Heater Road resurfacing, this will be the first that the board has heard about this. And I'm not asking you for a decision on this, but a month or so ago, I was asked by Crooker if we might be interested in the recycled materials that they are currently or soon to be taking out of the Hannafords lot. And I didn't get back to them soon enough, so they've given the material to Hanley's Construction. Mark Hanley being the owner. And we, we can have, we have an opportunity to get that recycled material for free. And Hanley will lay it down on, on Heater Road for us and do the necessary milling and such to make it an acceptable grade for about $7,700. I didn't, I wasn't able to get the, the quote. Hugh has that and he's been out busy looking at, we're looking at somebody's ceiling here. But Hugh has been out working on getting the, the crosswalks painted. But it's something I will be reviewing with the, the Public Works Committee, but I did want to let you know that that is a possibility. I look back in the file and we do have easements. We do have easements with several of the, or two of the adjacent property owners to improve 33 feet of the, of the width of the road. So we'd have to get a couple more easements and we could, we could move ahead on that as well. And then as the board is aware, we have as a, as an article on the upcoming town meeting warrant, an article which would allow, which would approve Heater Road as a town way. And that'll give us the rights to, to maintain 50, 50-foot right of way on, on Heater Road. And the distance would be from the intersection with Biski Road to the, the. I see that ceiling is here. That, that would give us the, that would give us the, the right to, to maintain the road from Biski Road to past the garage to Hutchings Lane, Hutchings Drive or Hutchings Lane. So I just want to make the board aware of that. I'll be reviewing it with the Public Works Committee, getting your thoughts and input on that. And then depending on what the committee wants to do, be taking that back to the, the board. And then the, the last item I had, had to do with the date for the fireworks. I talked to Chris Roberts and fireworks company is flexible with regard to the date that they shoot off the fireworks for us. And Chris wanted the board to decide whether you want to go ahead and have it, have the display on July 4th or whether you'd like to push it back later into the summer or fall for that matter. The fireworks this year is going to be extra special because it's the, the state's centennial and bicentennial. Yes, bicentennial. And so I think that, that, you know, we'll want to do it at a time when it, when it, when we get the most, the most crowd here. So the question on that is, is not something that needs to be decided right away. It's, it can, we have till your June 3rd meeting. But if you would give that some thought over the next couple of weeks to, to decide. Give it some thought on, on a decision whether or not you want to try to have the fireworks on July 4th or whether we should choose some, some date in the future. And so unless there's any questions, that's all I had for town manager items.
Okay. All right. Official action items. The first one now is the contract with George Parker for the EDA grant related services. I hope you've all had a chance and opportunity to review the materials that we got this afternoon about that. And I'll make a motion that we approve a grant or a contract, I'm sorry, with George Parker for his technical services related to the administration of the town's Economic Development Administration waterfront improvement grant.
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Discussion?
And just as part of that, if you could authorize me to, to sign off on that, to, to execute the contract.
The only, the question I have, Matt, is if I'm reading this correctly, because we have both a letter of May 20th and then the general contract. You will be paying, paying him for work already completed. He's already accumulated some hours. Is that right?
He has. We'll, yeah, we'll pay him for some of the, for, yes, yeah, we will, for some of the work he's been doing over the last couple of weeks.
Okay. Oh, that's good. You know, I don't have a problem with that. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. We're glad he's doing that. He's, I think he's been with that waterfront project since the day it started.
He has been.
We're getting a good deal.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, okay, the extension of foreclosure dates. Matt, you want to just say a few words about that for, you know, the folks that are here and not, that are not Selectmen?
Yeah, I think Cheryl, are you online as well?
I am, yep.
Okay, so you've previously approved an extension of the foreclosure. So there are three of them and you approve those through June 1st. Where we do not have, as a town, we do not have a lot of latitude with regard to foreclosing on properties. It's basically three years. You don't pay your taxes. The town has to move ahead on the, on the foreclosures. We have, I believe, and Cheryl will be able to correct if this is incorrect, but I believe we have three that are still outstanding. And it's up to the board to decide whether we continue, whether the town continues to extend the time for people to respond. Cheryl, do you want to?
And it's, and it's not so much for them to respond. It's so much for them to purchase their property back. Because right now the town owns all three of those properties. So we're essentially selling those properties back to them. One person reached out to me and wanted just to pay half of something. We can't accept half payments. We have to have it paid in full. It's just like when you sell a house. You're not going to sell a house to me and take half of the money and then hope that I give you the rest of the half. So it's up to the board whether they want to extend that. And it's, your timeframe is your timeframe. I didn't, I was just suggesting maybe August 31st. It would give two more months' extension. And then as of August 31st, the board would need to put an ad in the paper to sell these properties because there's three of them.
I do like the idea of giving them more time under the circumstances we're in. Because of the rents that people aren't paying right now, they're rotting that way. But I do think that if we show good faith to extend it a little bit, there's no reason why. I just think it's the right thing to do.
So is that a motion, Mark?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, now, just so I'm clear, your, your motion, Mark, is to extend the deadline to August 31st?
That's correct.
Recommendation, okay. And Lou, you seconded it?
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Did I hear a discussion? Oh, okay, we voted, but Dick McLean wants to say a few words.
I'm just curious if there are any legal ramifications around failure to conclude that transaction by a given date?
Yeah, if they, if they don't pay, we own it right now. It's tax-acquired property. So if they don't pay the, the back taxes and bring their account current, we have to put it out for auction. We have to sell the property. And then when we sell it, we have to make sure that the person, the purchaser knows that it's up to them to get any tenants that may be in there still out of there.
Right, but the acquisition is, is, is done. It's complete.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Deadline that, that I was curious about. Okay.
Okay. Warrant for the secondary school town meeting. That came to today. Good night. Good night.
Good night, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See ya.
Do I hear a motion on the warrant for the secondary and adult education warrant? Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the town of Damascotta warrant for town meeting in secondary education and adult education to be conducted on the 17th of June.
I will second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, thank you. And that concludes the official action items, Selectmen's discussion items. Okay, I'm just going to go by the order of where your pictures are on my screen. Josh, anything?
I'm good.
Okay, Darrell?
Uh, not really. I, I just want to say it's, it's nice to have some good weather and see people out and some businesses open again, so.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all I've got.
Just a clarification. I made a motion on one of the accounts payable. And I, I, all of a sudden I got cut off on the Zoom meeting and I didn't get back on until the lady, Mrs. Murphy, was, was talking. So I don't transpire it in between.
Oh, after the accounts payable warrant, we went right into the discussion with Susan and the, and the downtown street fair, whatever it is.
Fine.
So.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mark?
My only question is, is, I guess it's more from Matt, is if there is a bill that passes in Washington to, you know, to give some relief to some of the towns and the hours that, well, I see that we're keeping track of the extra hours that were irregular hours, we'll call it, whatever that may be. Is there a possibility of recouping some money in a way that's handed to the town?
Currently, well, to date, to date, we have not spent any money related directly to the pandemic. We have not spent any hours related to, to the pandemic. Now, potentially, we could have some additional revenue that would come in through the state if our revenue sharing is reduced. And it, we know for sure that it will be reduced in, in one form or another. So I, right now I'm seeing that as the only possibility or only potentiality for the town to receive some of this stimulus money.
You know, I'm looking at accommodations to do whatever, voting, moving people, employees around, you know, I just, I guess I'm trying to recoup whatever we can for the town, knowing that we're probably going to be taking a hit on the state side too.
Yeah, and at this point, like I say, we, we have not had any expenses beyond what we would normally have. We've been watching that fairly closely.
Yeah, so keep our fingers crossed that we'll get some federal money.
You know, even, you know, even I'll share if we decide to do something for downtown because of this. Is there, you know, maybe I'm stretching, but I'm looking at whatever this impact that has on a service center community. I want to tap into that wherever we can.
I understand, yeah. If, if we have additional hours, we'll, we'll definitely track those and, and we'll, we'll report those to get some, some reimbursement.
And, and I want to keep stressing this because we have in the past, we are a service center of Lincoln County. So whatever expenses we can put onto something, if we can submit it, we need to try to get whatever we can.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm hoping that the service center organization to go to bat in our town to put us kind of at the front line. Guess that's something we just need to make a note of when the time comes. That we should be at the front of the line.
That's all I have.
Okay, and I, I don't, okay, and I don't have anything this week. So I think at that point, we can adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting and move into the Board of Assessors meeting. Okay, all in favor? Hey, and those of you that came to visit for the Selectmen's meeting, thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay. And we'll move into the Assessors meeting. Let me see. We'll call the meeting to order the minutes from January 8th?
I motion approve.
Now, second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Because I was not there. I was there, but I wasn't in a official capacity.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have an application for local taxation exemption from the end along the way. They are here, aren't they? We have a representative from the end along the way?
Yes. Timothy Kimpton, I'm the treasurer. I'm here in my capacity as a board member and treasurer.
Okay.
I'm Sherry Flint and I'm here as president and co-founder.
Okay, would you like to just discuss a little bit? And we'll make a decision. The Board of Selectmen can ask questions, whatever.
Okay, I'll begin and I'll let Tim kind of fill in. As you may remember, some of you may remember, Robin, you probably remember, and I know Matt remembers. We were before you, I think, back in June of 2016, asking for property exemption on 741 Main Street, the old Chapman Farm property. And at that time, you had an attorney, I think, look over the, the request. And my understanding of that response from him was that, or them, was that we were still pretty much a conceptualization at that point, back in four years ago. So we have very religiously been paying our taxes to the town of Damascotta.
Appreciate that.
I know, I know. And I get that. I get that. And I understand that this is a terrible time to be coming before you all with this request, but be that as it may. I, I think we've done a pretty good job of determining that we are meeting our mission. We have programs going regularly until the coronavirus, you know, pretty much quieted everybody down. We have educational programs. We have entertainment programs. We have caregivers programs. We've had Spectrum Generations has hosted their symposium out there on aging and aging in place. So I would just like for you all to reconsider that we are indeed meeting our mission of caring for caregivers, supporting caregivers and older adults. We feed, we've been feeding, had a lunch with a bunch, we call it, on Thursdays, probably for a year and a half now, where caregivers come. Sometimes their loved one comes as well. And they have developed community. They look out for each other. They watch out for each other. And, yeah, so that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Okay, questions from anyone? Comments?
I get a question. Do you charge for these services, these people?
No, no, we have not charged. We, we have had. No, no, we have not charged. We, um, we have had volunteers and donors who, who've, you know, helped to support these, these. Well, now, Mark, let me back up a second. Sorry about that. I'm thinking about the lunches. So we do not charge for lunches. People are welcome to make a donation if they'd like, but we do not charge for lunches. For some of the events, we've asked for donations to cover the, the presenter's costs in, in making the trip. I'm trying to think if we've ever charged for an event. Not to my recollection, Spectrum Generation, yeah, not to my recollection. There may have been, but I cannot think of one.
I don't believe we've charged for any events.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I, I've got a question, Robyn. I noticed that the next, next when we decide on Ledgewood Court in there, they were, they had mentioned a 2% payment of lieu of taxes. What is, along the way, feeling about doing a payment in lieu of taxes for the town of Damascota?
So that's.
Oh, we've been in favor of that since the outset. We talked about that with our first application and and that's been our intention since 2014, when this organization was formed.
And so you consider that now?
It's always been our intention.
Okay, and your property taxes are 7,500 plus a little bit?
Yeah, plus 200. Seventy, seventy-seven hundred and some odd. Yes, so we've, we have been very good partners with the town for, for a number of years and we have never, you know, we paid regularly and we, that's our intention of continuing to make a donation in lieu of taxes, which all nonprofits in the area should be doing, which I realize we're not.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
There's only, there's only one, one place in the town of Damascota that does a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
Yeah.
We'd like to double that.
My, yeah. My, my feeling is, is that if we, if we can give you your status as of now, that that maybe we can draft an agreement that we know that's set in stone, that yes, we are going to every year, in along the way, is going to do a payment in lieu of taxes. And I guess that might be the way, way to set it up going further for the town. I guess that's not a policy for you guys to worry about, but something that we need to think about is like.
Agreed.
I have a question.
Yeah, Sherri?
Yeah, so I think that brings up a really good question. And I felt this four, four years ago when I went before you all and somebody made the comment that DRA was a great partner because they were doing picnic tables for the town on the waterfront. I'm like, uh, we could do picnic tables for the town on the waterfront. I think it would really be nice if across the board, all nonprofits are expected to do the same thing.
Yeah. The only problem is, I do not think you can legally the 501(c) to do that.
Right.
You can only ask.
Yes. But I, I would like to propose that those who, because I've talked to Mary Ann Pinkham, who actually said that Spectrum used to do theirs until they could no longer afford it. And so I get that there's some small nonprofits in our area and I'm thinking maybe in, in lieu of taxes, maybe they clean up the waterfront or they clean up the roads or they clean up something. But I think we should all be paying it forward in a way that is even for all of us. So I have no problem signing an agreement to make a donation in lieu of taxes if, if, you know, if you are presenting that to all the nonprofits. I think that's a great idea.
I just did.
I can't see signing. It's not legally
Okay.
forcible.
Okay.
But.
I, I would say it is a matter of policy for in along the way to make payments in lieu of taxes.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
When, I get a question. When do you plan on building your buildings and, you know, the grand plan here? What's your timeframe?
So, um, before the coronavirus hit, I was hoping to go back before the the, the town of Damascota and explain where we are. We have the approval from the town to do the first phase, which is the phase we're in now, which is the farmhouse and the inn and the parking and so forth. And then we walk it out from there. So before we, before we continue on through any phases, we have to go back to the town and ask them to approve it and then we go forward. The whole thing has been approved, but they wanna make sure we don't go defunct in the midst of buildings. So, so it's a win-win. Hopefully, I'm thinking that the full build out before the coronavirus, we had a very strong forward-moving budget meeting. And since then, I think personally, all nonprofits, all businesses, it's probably gonna be a year and a half before we get back to where we need to be. Thankfully, we have no debt, so we're in a good, good standing, but I think it's gonna be a little while. So we had hoped seven years, so I'm thinking it's gonna be a bit longer than that. Sorry, Mark.
Oh, that's fine.
I, I don't think, we're not talking seven years before you see buildings out back. That would be seven years for the whole project to be completed.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, Robyn?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know if it's a, if we're having a technical issue or why, but Matt Murphy, our assessor, was going to be online, but he's not online right now. And I have talked to him, talked to him extensively about this and his recommendation, along with Jim Murphy, is to approve the request for exempt status.
Calm down, Sherri.
It hadn't been done yet.
I make a motion that we approve the exempt status.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, thank you, thank you. That'll make buildings go up much quicker.
I think David Chapman would be very pleased with what's happening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Come see us.
Okay, and thank you for hanging in there all this, this hour and a half or however long it's been. We appreciate the company.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the application for local taxation exemption from Midcoast Community Action, which is the Ledgewood Court Apartments.
Why don't I, if, if the, the ladies will allow, I'll start the conversation. In, in that, for the most part, you folks know who I am. Daryl, you and I have not met. Need to fix that when they're letting me go out. I, um, I'm, I'm here this evening as the treasurer of the board for Midcoast Main Community Action. With me is Claire Berkowitz. Raise your hand, Claire. That's our, our CEO. And, and Rosemary represents CNC Management. Do I get that name right? Yeah.
CNC Realty Management.
Realty Management. MMCA actually owns the property. We contract with CNC to manage that property for us. And they are actually the ones who have completed the application that was done on our behalf. We, uh, we've, we've been involved with that property since its inception, I don't know how many years ago. And, and up until this past winter, that property was a, a, a partnership with a number of investors and ourselves and the Maine State Housing Authority. The investors were honestly, were using it as, as a tax loss. And they're only allowed to do that for a certain number of years. Uh, nine, 2019 represented the end of those numbers of years, so they no longer wanted to be involved. Past that point, those investors would have to start, they could no longer use it for that purpose. So, so it, it's ownership went up. I, I think prior to that time, I think MMC's responsibility was something very small, like 1% ownership in that property. We took that property over and we now own it entirely. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in, in everything that we do. And it's, it's for that purpose that we are requesting the this, this exemption from real estate tax like any other nonprofit. We don't have a lot of extra pennies and we need to save them where we can. If you've read the application, you see that we, we also have, have offered at this time, a pilot. We, we certainly count on the, the town services that we receive and, and, and feel that it's important that we contribute in, in some manner towards the existing of that support. And then, of course, you know, my own background, suffering as you all do with, with organizations, not all of them small, that do, do not give the town any money. And, and just from a more personal standpoint, I don't want us to be in that position. I think it's, I think it's important to the extent that we can at any time that we, we throw something into the pot. Uh, Claire, Rosemary, comments?
I'll just, I'd like to say hello. Sorry.
Go ahead, Claire.
Do most of the talking about the business side and the application because they're, they're more in the day-to-day operations of the apartment complex, but I recently became the CEO of Midcoast Main Community Action in October of 2019. And so, um, this whole process has been new to me, but CNC has been a real partner for us in their management. We do provide resident services to the residents there and, you know, just as we took on this property and be, and and, and our, and our resident service folks really got more engaged and I would say excited about the, the ways we think we can be of service, the pandemic hit. And so we've still been, you know, so we've had to be nimble and, and do be, be there for folks in a different way. But we, you know, we, we're a partner in Lincoln County. We have Head Start in New Castle. We, um, we provide WIC services in the area and use the, the office onsite or the, the community space onsite to do WIC outreach programs. So it's a real vital piece of our, of our mission. And so we're, I'm, I'll let Rosemary speak a little bit more maybe about the, the numbers.
Um, I, I think you, you both gave a very good summary, Dick and Claire. I, I think I would add a, a little description of what this property does provide. It's 24 units. It's called workforce housing, which means you're housing families primarily, working families. We're required, uh, the, we still have financing with Maine State Housing. We have a, a paying loan that is a relatively small loan, but we also have a, like a $2.6 million, no, $2.26 million loan that's 0% deferred. It comes due in 2033. We really, really expect Maine Housing will probably extend that, so we won't have to pay it. But this property, we wouldn't be applying, I think, for, the owner wouldn't be applying except for the fact that the property is, has always been a little bit struggling, but financially. There's been years where there's deficits. There's been years when Maine has had to put money into the property. Lately, it's been doing a lot better, but it's, the property's aging, so it's got some capital needs. We have only about $47,000 in the replacement reserve, which we fund every, every month. But we have about $85,000 in capital needs coming up for the next several years, so we really are looking for a break on the taxes if we, if that can be possible. We estimate the, if we pay 2%, usually a pilot of service charge is 2% of annual income. And that's typically for housing project rental income. And that comes out to about $4,000 a year right now. Of course, as the rents go up, that will go up every year a little bit. But sometimes there's a actual agreement that we sign with, with the town for this type of pilot payment. Sometimes there's not, but what we'd normally do is provide our audited financial statement each year and then we pay taxes each year based on the audited financials. These financial statements are. Um, and the requirements that we have with Maine Housing, and these are in place, they are 90-year agreement. This property was developed in 2003. So up till 2093, of the 24 units, 19 have to be set aside for people at 60% of area median, median income and five units at 50% of area median income. Not, right now, we have eight people that actually have a Section 8 voucher, housing choice voucher, and those people are gonna be at 30% of their median income. So we're really serving a population that this has significant need. We're also required by Maine State Housing to provide four hours a week of resident service coordination. So that's basically the summary. We'd like to keep the property, the owner would, for the full 74, 73 more years, we're required to keep it affordable and beyond.
Any questions? Matt, did you have something for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you see me?
I can see you.
Can you see me? Okay. Sorry again for the audio visual. Uh, yes, I did talk with Matt Murphy and he and Jim Murphy have reviewed the application in detail, have talked to the applicants. And again, their recommendation is to approve the exempt status for Midcoast Community Action Ledgewood Court.
Okay, thank you.
I, I've got one question.
Okay.
I noticed on, on the paperwork, I don't know if this is on the town's end. It just says exempt classification of organization and indicate exemption requested and it says charitable and benevolent. And there's all sorts of boxes you can check on the form, but, and one of them is nonprofit residential housing, but that was, is that just? I'm just asking, you know, on that form, do we need to make sure that it's the nonprofit residential or is it the charitable benevolent?
Well, I, I think in terms of the entire, the, the agency as a whole, I think, I, I think we fall into both of those categories. I, unless one of the ladies disagrees, I, I, I wouldn't see a problem with our also checking off that box if the selectman would accept two check marks in there.
Yeah, I'm just not sure on the form, just making sure that we cover ourselves on the this form is correctly. I don't know if that's a question for Matt Murphy, I guess.
That box actually should have been checked. I think I misunderstood what the meaning of nonprofit residential housing was, but I think that would apply.
Yeah. I, I would also, I, so, so again, I, I think we would readily accept that box being checked off. Unless Matt Murphy, for some reason, thinks it's inappropriate, but.
But these forms have already been submitted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well.
Have to send, submit a revised application, I guess.
Well, we, we, we stand by what we've submitted.
Yeah.
But, but if, if the, if the town's gonna be more comfortable with that additional box being checked off, then, then
Okay.
we don't object to that. I, I hate to have to go through the process of resubmitting.
We did describe that we met that classification in all of the materials we provided, that it was nonprofit residential.
Yeah.
Rental housing.
That's all through there. Yeah.
That was also, it's in the articles of the corporation that that's a purpose of the organization.
And that is your, also your IRS filings also.
When I saw that on the form, I thought it should say rental, rental housing.
Yeah, but you.
Nonprofit residential housing meant something different to me than. Nonprofit residential housing meant something different to me than rental housing.
I make a motion, we approve the application.
I'll second. Any, any further discussion?
I'd just like to hear Matt Murphy's take on it.
Okay, somebody had a question too.
Mark?
Now she had mentioned a requirement of something service, community service, what was that?
It's resident service coordination and that is to have in place staff or, or, or some company or agency like here that helps connect the tenants to services that they might need.
Okay.
Right, we have a
Maine Housing requirement.
Yeah, and we have a staff member who, who works with families to connect them if they need help with navigating health insurance or getting access to work. Any kind of need that a family might have and, and might be struggling with. She's there to, to provide some help and assistance and guidance to, to keep them successfully housed.
Yeah, and there is an office there, gives us the capacity to do that right, right onsite.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now Matt, did I hear you say you had something to say?
Or? But
Josh? You had a question for Matt, Josh?
Yeah, I think Josh asked if Matt, he was asking for, for Matt Murphy's opinion, but I haven't discussed the particular category with, with Matt or with Jim. But I know in my earlier discussions with our previous assessor that the charitable benevolent category is generally the category that's checked. And for organizations such as Midcoast Community Action, that's the appropriate category. And the Supreme Court has upheld, the state Supreme Court has upheld that classification. So that's a more general comment. I, we'd have to wait to get Matt's specific assessment of that. But I do believe that the charitable benevolent category is the appropriate one to use. I would never tell the Supreme Court that they're wrong and they probably wouldn't listen to me if I did.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pilot program for the 2%. Maybe that'll, it sets the bar high for some of the other nonprofits in the town.
On board. Yeah, I would like to see them do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna sign off from the meeting. Hope you all stay well.
Nice to meet you all. Take care. Bye.
Here. Bye-bye. Okay, any other business? Matt, anything from you? Josh?
I, I just have a quick question or just observation. I know if these organizations are going to offer this payment of lieu taxes and we put it into our records of our meetings that, hey, back in 2020, you guys had mentioned and said that you firmly believed in payment of lieu taxes and we gladly give you a payment in lieu of taxes. So I, and I guess on the Midcoast Community Action, you know, it's in their proposal. So how do we say, you know, guys, kind said you do this and now you're not doing it? Just, you know, what, we don't have any recourse, it's just a donation.
They said that they would complete an agreement with the town to do that.
Yeah.
Now, the, in along the way, didn't, well, if it's an agreement, you enforce it, yeah, it's a contract. Pardon me?
You can't enforce it legally.
If there's a signed agreement between two parties for a payment?
No, because they're tax exempt.
Right, there's no not taxes. I just I just wanted it to be in our records. I just wanted it to be in our records that when we have a meeting minutes and all that, that everything, because we've had this happen before where an organization will say, hey, we're gonna give you a payment in lieu of taxes and then administration changes and, oh, we never said that. So
All you can do is use it to embarrass them. That's all.
But it, if it is a payment in lieu intact, in lieu of taxes, then it is not a tax payment. It is a gift to the town that is not taxes. So if there's a signed agreement that they're gonna pay this
Check with the attorney. Check with the attorney.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We just need to put it in red and put them in that one page that we have in the
Right, yeah, yeah. And point that out at the, when we're going through the book.
Exactly.
Maybe embarrass some of the other organizations to pitch in a little bit. Okay, any other business?
Matt Murphy is on now. But I think Matt I can let you know what the board decided. But I think we're, we're set.
Yes.
Make a motion, will you, John?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you to you for staying in and hanging in there for this long meeting. Appreciate your
Yeah, Matt?
I have.
Matt? Yes, which Matt, this one?
Please, please send me the invitation to that meeting tomorrow.
Yes, I will.
Things off my Is that at 3:00 or 3:30?
Uh, 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
And the meet, just a note for the board, the plan is to have your next meeting on June 3rd here at Town Hall.
And before you go, tomorrow at 10 o'clock at Hillside Cemetery, there is going to be the placement of a Civil War headstone on a grave. Patty Whitten discovered a Civil War soldier that was buried in. And so at 10 o'clock on Thursday, there's gonna be a little ceremony to install his headstone. Get out.
Let, let Patty know if you're interested in that, because we have to limit the number to 10.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
I forgot about that. Thank you. Have a good week, everybody.
Thanks. Alright, I'll see you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Guys.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Matt, someone who was talking about the lost connection. I had the same thing happen. I got just as far as we're gonna start the meeting and the whole thing, I got like a fire siren going off on my computer and I couldn't get back in. It froze, it froze the screen, it froze everything. I had to unplug and, and really start from scratch. So by the time I got back on, they were, it was at the end of the public conversation. Did you record this for the cloud?
I did, I recorded it to the cloud and I also have it being recorded on the cameras in Town Hall.
Oh, great, okay, because I, I need that. Okay, good, then I'll get the DVD. I just, I need that first section on the warrants and stuff, I didn't get any of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna turn off the recording here, okay. And just a second, Matt, why don't you stay on for a sec? Oh, did Matt, you there? Oh. Matt, I can't hear you. Matt, can you hear? Matt, can you hear me? Matt, do you wanna give me a call on my cell phone, 832-1071?